Good evening, everyone. We are going to start with the Community Development Authority meeting. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the North Wall in Council Chamber. Roll call, please.
John?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
Linda?
Here.
Brian?
Yes.
I will call the meeting to order. The first item is Resolution Number CDA 2024-01, Redevelopment Plan for OSC Valley Megs One LLC, OSC Megs Two LLC, and Omni Court Valley LLC Redeveloper. Are you wanting to speak on this?
Yeah.
Okay, so we are here, Community Development Agency meeting. First item is going to be Redevelopment Plan that has been submitted from the redevelopers that the mayor just named off. What we're doing tonight is Redevelopment Plan is somewhat still in the works between us and the developer, but it's in a position where we are ready to refer it to planning commission for planning commissions review and recommendations as to whether or not it conforms with the city's comprehensive development plan. So that is what we are doing with this first item on the Community Development Agency agenda.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number CDA 2024-01, which is the redevelopment plan for the developers listed.
So, second.
Isn't that to send it over to planning?
Correct. Yep. Okay, there was a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Nope. Okay, vote, please. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, number four, Resolution Number CDA 2024-02, Authority Consideration and Action to Approve Amendment Number Nine to the Redevelopment Contract Between the Community Development Authority of the City of Valley, Nebraska and Blue Water Development Corporation.
So this is the annual, Blue Water, when it was approved in 2014, or Redevelopment Plan. Pursuant to that plan, this is what we call the WTI. So each year, the lots that had building permits full for the prior calendar year are certified to the Douglas County Treasurer. And this is the amendment to that redevelopment plan that provides for those additional lots to be added in essentially to the plan and authorizing the city then to send to the county the required notice to divide. So that is what we're asking of you on this item, which is the 2024-02 Resolution.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number CDA 2024-02.
Sub moved. Second.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, vote, please. All in favor? Okay, number five, Resolution Number CDA 2024-03.
So the next three resolutions, 2403, 2304, and 2405, are amendments to prior years where we have certified the Blue Water lots to the county. There were lots that were missed in the 21, 22, and 23 certifications to the county. So we are amending those prior amendments to include all of the lots that needed to be listed. The 15-year period continues to roll from where it should have started. We're not giving up any sort of time. And the base valuation year for those is going to be the same as it would have been had we done it correctly in the first place. So all we are doing is making those amendments. So all three of those resolutions just essentially amend to the A, which is the listing of those lots that we are certifying.
So we're just correcting an error?
Correct. Yep.
All right, I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number CDA 2023- or 2024-03, which is Amendment Six to the Redevelopment Contract Between the Community Development Authority of the City of Valley, Nebraska and the Blue Water Development Corporation, dated May 11, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any other discussion? Vote, please. All in favor? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number CDA 2024-04, which is amendment to amend Amendment Number Seven of the Redevelopment Contract Between the Community Development Authority of the City of Valley, Nebraska and Blue Water Development Corporation, dated June 14, 2022.
So moved.
Is this the same thing where we?
Yes, so the first one, you amended the 2021 amendment, now we're amending the 2022 amendment.
Okay. Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, vote, please. All in favor? All right, then I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number CDA 2024-05, which is the action to amend Amendment Number Eight of the Redevelopment Contract Between the Community Development Authority of the City of Valley, Nebraska and Blue Water Development Corporation, dated June 13, 2023.
So moved.
Same thing. Second.
Is there any other discussion? Vote, please. All in favor? All right, we will adjourn the meeting of the Community Development Authority. Kristy, you good?
Yep.
Okay, I'll move into the regular council agenda. Anyone desiring to speak on any item on the agenda is invited to do so during the visitor correspondence section, but will be limited to three minutes. After being recognized by the mayor, please state your name and address for the record. Anyone desiring to speak for a longer period of time should make arrangements with the city clerk prior to the meeting. A person wishing to speak during the business portion of the meeting must complete a city council agenda request form. This form is available on the city's website and must be completed and submitted no later than 5:00 PM on a Thursday preceding any city council meeting. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the North Wall in Council Chamber. The mayor and council reserve the right to adjourn into executive session on any agenda item per Nebraska Vice Statute 84-1410. One copy of all reproducible written material to be discussed at this meeting is available for examination or copying. Roll call, please.
John?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
Linda?
Here.
Brian?
Yes.
We will call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Ryan, will you read us, please?
Please, please. To the light of the United States of America, and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I have proof of publication in front of me. Now we'll have visitors' correspondence. At this time, any individual may speak on any issues not on the agenda or on any agenda items that do not include public hearings. Comments are limited to three minutes for each individual. Visitors may state their comments and should not expect the council to engage in back-and-forth dialogue regarding the comments. Unless an agenda item includes a public hearing, no visitors may speak during the business portion of the meeting. So I will enter into record that you all received an email from Mr. Voucher today at 2:05 PM with an objection to item number 10 on the council agenda. Any other visitors' correspondence? Okay, come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Pat Kedeski. I live at 116 West Whittingham here in Valley, Nebraska. And I am here just to talk to the council people and whoever's here. I was one of the volunteer circulators for the petition that was taken around much earlier this year. And I think there were lots of people who signed all of the petitions. And now I'm being asked, and I was being asked, from two or three people that signed my petition, what happened to it? What happened to it? And I said, I don't know. I don't know. All I could hear was bits and pieces from different people. What I'm asking the council, if you have any knowledge of what stopped the petition, if I could please get that in writing so that I can be respectful enough to the people that signed my petition. That's my request. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Linda, did you have something? No, you're raising your hand. Okay, anyone else? Okay. All right, now I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Sub moved. Second.
Vote, please. All in favor? Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Sub moved.
Any discussion? Vote, please. All in favor? Okay, number eight, Friends of the Valley Public Library, request to close Second Street for summer reading kickoff party.
Good evening, everyone. Sammy Stewart, library director. The Friends of the Library are hosting the library's annual summer reading kickoff party on June 1st and would like permission from the council to close Second Street from that Spur Street intersection, just the library's little backyard fence there, to enable room for a bounce house and some outdoor games for the kids. We're looking at from about noon on that Saturday until 5:00 PM.
I make the motion, we approve it.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Vote, please. All in favor? Thanks, Sammy.
Thanks.
All right, number nine, Valley Fire Department, Vince Sunday, request street closure June 9th, 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, West Church Street between Locust and Walnut Street.
Hello, I'm Vince Sunday, 10707 North 300th. I'm here on behalf of the Valley Fire Department. We're hosting, I have an open house event at the fire station, at the old one. Like to close Church Street there in front of the station from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM on June 9th of 2024. We'll work with the one driveway that's going to affect, we usually work with them to get in and out if needed.
I make a motion, we approve it.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Vote, please. All in favor?
Thanks, I'd also like to apologize. We closed down that street a few times, opened last year and didn't get permission, so we'll do better in the future.
Appreciate it. All right, for the next item, I am going to turn the meeting over to Council President John Batchard due to my interest in the Valley's foundation.
So, let's see, Angela, do you have some comments you want to make on this?
Hi, I'm Angela Extrom, 502 South Park Ave, Valley, Nebraska. I'm here tonight to request from the Valley Days Foundation, and at this time, I'm not aware of any other foundation that Mayor Grove has. 2024 Annual Valley Days Sponsorship Request. A little bit of background before we get started. In 2015, the annual Valley Days event was revived as a city-sponsored and city-funded event. It was originally coordinated in conjunction with the Valley Veterans Day, or Valley's Veterans Barbecue Competition, which was also a city event. Both events were funded through the Keno Funds and business sponsorships obtained by city staff. The event was primarily coordinated and ran by the city staff as well. In 2018, the use of the Keno Funds to fully fund this event became in jeopardy. Therefore, a group of citizens and residents of Valley volunteered and formed the Valley Days Foundation. It's a nonprofit organization and were dedicated to coordinating and funding events throughout the community for events and betterment. The attached proposal was presented to former mayor Carol Smith and city clerk Joan Sewer in July of 2018. Both agreed with the proposal, and the city began using $5,000 with the Keno Funds to support our annual event. The Valley Days Foundation would request the city council approve this payment of $5,000 budgeted from the Keno Funds to support our event this year on August 9th, 10th, and 11th. The funds do not co-mingle with any other events and are strictly used for the Valley Days event. Supporting the event through the annual donation ensures they don't continue to be sponsored with us and not use any city staff or funds moving forward. That's it.
Great. Thanks, Angela. Questions from council?
Is that enough money?
No, that's not enough money. We also raised money through sponsorship with local businesses and community members.
Brian, that's the only thing we put in the budget.
Yeah. I mean, you can, you know, write me a check if you want after the council meeting.
That's what's in the budget.
Yeah, just the budget is the $5,000. It's about that.
Other questions?
None.
Anybody with a motion?
I make a motion, we approve $5,000.
Excellent. Second, running. Okay, all in favor? Vote, please. Thanks, all in favor.
Thank you. I also have one other item on the agenda this evening. The Valley Days Foundation would also like to host again the Cole Pepper and Merryweather Circus in the city park. Brian, I think last time you wanted to be part of the trapeze. This year, we'll be in the park on, we're requesting July 24th at 5:00 PM to 7:30 PM. The crew typically shows up the day before, sets up, and they're out and gone the next morning. And last year, or two years ago, we did it, and the families loved it, the community loved it. I think all the kids had a great time. When they left, you couldn't even tell there was a circus that had been telling on that.
Questions on that before we vote on that? Comments?
I make a motion, we approve it.
Vote, please.
Thank you, everybody. Have a night.
Thanks, John. Okay, number 11, Station to Station Run, Tristan Nelson, request for approval of run on October 19th, 2024.
Tristan Nelson, last year, we did this run in September. We had 54 runners, had some sponsorship money that's going to both fire departments. And with the help of Douglas County Sheriff, we were able to not completely close off roads due to it being under 95 people. So this year, we plan on capping the race number to 95 so that they can kind of surround the runners the whole race as they did last year, start to finish. I mean, I think we started last year at 8:10 AM. Our last runner or walker was out of Valley city limits, and I think it was 14 minutes. So they did a great job of getting everybody safely from Valley to Waterloo. The fire departments did awesome with helping at the aid station halfway through. So just wanted to do that run again this year, October, what was it, 19th?
Okay, any questions for Tristan? Okay, now I'll entertain a motion to approve the request.
Has it talked about it already?
We have not, but we're going to end of this month. Just kind of give more rundown of how last year went and what we expect this year, so.
You've already been in contact with Douglas County Sheriff?
Yes, yep. They're aware of the date and are okay with it. So they said they don't have much going on run-wise in the fall, so they were excited because they had such a good time somehow, so.
I make a motion, we approve it.
Second.
Any other discussion? Vote, please. All in favor? Thanks, Tristan.
Thank you.
All right, number 12, are you, you guys got enough here? But you're good?
Yeah, we're as good as we're going to be today.
Waterloo Valley Rec Association, Jamie Jorgensen, request to rename Legion Field.
Jamie Jorgensen, 2216 Thomas Drive in Waterloo. And then Jason Jorgensen, I'm a communications coordinator for the Waterloo Valley Rec. Jason Jorgensen is our vice president. And then Tyler Curtis is our website guru and all things that I send him to make him do for me. We are in the works with doing some things at the Legion Field. You guys have been a great supporter of the organization. And it's come to our attention that what I have always known to be Chris Frank Field, as dedicated in 1982, actually doesn't have an official proclamation that we could find somewhere on the record books. I know many folks in the audience all assumed it was the naming as well. So tonight, we're actually requesting that we can officially make it be Chris Frank Field, as we all know it, that had been here for the history of Valley. In addition to that, we are also requesting that we add to be the Frost Family Stadium in honor of the Frost family that has over 30 years of dedicated to the Waterloo Valley Recreation Association, significant contributions volunteer-wise, fiscally throughout those years. In addition to that, as we move forward, we'd also like to put up a plaque to honor certain other members of the community in the past and then in moving to the forward to the future that would be recognizable based on contributions, again, through volunteering, timeframe, finance, financial, et cetera. We're going to work some parameters and bring that to you guys at a later date for that request. Did I miss anything?
You nailed it.
Sweet.
The whole board isn't here.
Yeah, unfortunately, the whole board is not here. They wanted to be here, but we were playing DC West baseball at 4:00 at Capillion South, so they're with their players, so you're stuck with the three of us.
Well, I make a motion, we approve it.
I have a couple elements, their questions. You and I talked, and I appreciated the feedback or the insights that you shared. I would probably sit there and say that as we look at this, we can officially name something, but to ask for it to be permanently named is probably an overreach. Are you okay amending that?
I don't think so. Again, just Chris Frank has been around for so long that I will really admit that was prior to my birth, which is great. So I just think it's really important for these two benefactors beyond some of the other folks. That's again why we want to build some parameters around some other plaque naming stuff, because there's lots of folks in the community that definitely deserve recognition prior to my times, you know, and well beyond my time when I will be here. So I do would request that it would be a permanent naming convention for Chris Frank Field and the Frost Family Stadium.
Yeah, is that the sentiment of the entire board?
It is the sentiment of the entire board, yes.
Okay, and the Hanson's have been contacted about this?
We have not discussed with the Hanson's, but they would be a part of the plaque. And we have actually some other honors that we'd like to do with the Hanson family for their significant contributions, because they have made a very significant contribution, again, for several years as well.
Right, Tyler, by your face, it sounds like you have a comment.
No, I think that exactly what you said is true. And, you know, I think that despite anything that went on between the Hanson family and the rest of us, I think that everyone is in unison in the fact that Dwight Frost and the Frost family need to be, you know, have made such a significant contribution that they need to be honored in some way. I'm not privy on the distinction between permanent and non-permanent naming, to be honest with you, but I'm okay with it either way. So, you know, I don't have details on it, it's an odd thing, but I think the Hanson's need to be honored, and I think that the Frost family needs to be honored. And then Chris Frank, who frankly, I don't even think my dad was born when he was around, but I think that he needs to be honored as well. So we did get some details from the Legion guys as to who that was and what happened there, so that's definitely something we want to keep and have honored, so.
We need to move that rock closer.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
We've talked about that a few times now.
Unfortunately, it's not going to take just a dozen strong young backs to do that. Well, it'll need a little work.
Yep, I certainly honor what the Frank family and everybody else has done on this and love Legion baseball.
Yes.
Having grown up in a town with that and found it to be one of those central pillars. But I also know that family names have those issues, just like we name a field in Memorial Stadium, something, and then it has to change. And so I would be resident to do something on a permanent basis, but I would also be interested in naming something along the lines of the Waterloo Valley Field or something else that maybe looks at the region versus a family and honoring them in a different way.
I don't agree. I think the Frost family has, if it wasn't for Dwight, I don't think the Legion.
They would have folded up a long time ago.
Would be what it is today.
Yep, I agree. I don't take anything from them, just have to run into issues when we name something after someone, so.
I think we go with the original motion I made that we, it's a permanent naming.
I make a motion for that. Second.
You can't make a motion in a second.
I love the enthusiasm, Brian.
Go ahead and do it.
Tyler, you had another comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, in some context that maybe some people don't have about the contribution the Frost family has made, but prior to the current run in the past few years of Legion baseball, I mean, the board essentially was the Hanson and the Frost family for, I don't know, 10 years, maybe longer.
Longer, longer.
And they, those two families essentially held up that pillar of this community that we just spoke about alone. And I'm also not going to lie to you, I know personally that those two families contributed to a substantial amount of the fundraising for the board during that time out of their own pockets, just the kids playing baseball, me being one of those kids. So, you know, at the time, I didn't know that, but now I do, and they're both great friends of mine. I love Dwight and Joe and the Hanson's.
Yeah, Dwight always felt like financial reason should never stop a kid from playing ball. And he always made sure that somehow it got paid, and I'm sure it was a lot of it out of his own pocket.
Although unwritten, that is essentially a rule within our board, that financial reasons will never keep a child from playing baseball in Waterloo. So he has held that pillar and ensured when he left the board and retired finally that that continued, so.
I just want to add that under Dwight's watch, for the 27 years he was treasurer for the board, we were proud to say that we never raised Legion dues.
Still haven't.
Still haven't.
In a world where a lot of organizations are charging thousands of dollars to play, our players are still paying $260 for registration, so. And if it wasn't for Dwight, we wouldn't be here today to make this request.
That includes the Minnesota trip, I would say.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table and a second.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, vote, please. All in favor? Okay, so now, the request was to have this proclamation. We might still need to do a resolution after the fact just to make sure, but we'll go through with this proclamation, so let me read this. Proclamation, Chris Frank Field Frost Family Stadium. Whereas a request has been made by the Waterloo Valley Recreation Association regarding the naming of the Legion Field inside the city park, whereas the association believes this to be in the best interest of the field because Chris Frank and the Frost family have been instrumental in keeping the program alive and active for many years, whereas the association also believes this would be an appropriate way to recognize and honor the contributions these two families have contributed to the baseball program, whereas the association has requested a permanent name change from the Legion Field to the Chris Frank Field Frost Family Stadium. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Cindy Grove, Mayor, City of Valley, do hereby proclaim the Legion Field to be permanently renamed the Chris Frank Frost Family Stadium.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your support.
Thank you. Okay, number 13, Ginger Cove Common Area, Patty O'Connor, request closure of the street at Ginger Cove entrance on July 3rd. Okay, well, our request, her request is in here, so it's the same request they've made for many, many years. They closed the entrance of Ginger Cove, and you can see it on here, 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM. They do the annual fireworks show, they have their own private security company that monitors who's coming in and out, unless the residents in and their guests, so. Entertain a motion to approve that?
Sub moved.
Any other discussion? Vote, please. All in favor? Okay, number 14, Valley Community Historical Society Lease Agreement. So this lease agreement is to lease that area of the park that we had talked about to the Historical Society for.
Number two, or number she's worth?
Correct. Well, they still are.
Yeah.
Yes. So yes, we have the lease agreement in here. Do anybody have anything else to say about that?
Thank you.
Dave Patac, excuse me, City Minister. I had the pleasure of working with Dave Williams, the president of the Valley Community Historical Society on this. Two months ago, the council approved the thought of transferring the property to the Historical Society. They haven't quite decided yet what direction they're going to go as far as for the future. So in talking with Mr. Williams, we decided maybe a lease was the best way to go so that we wouldn't have to deed it back and forth until such time as they actually had some concrete plans. So I would recommend you approve the lease.
So on this lease, is it any different than the fire department's, or if they build a building, are we obligated to pay them $250,000 like we did?
Well, this will just be a lease, and I guess.
I'm actually fine with the lease long-term.
Yeah.
In case something.
I mean, and correct me if I'm wrong.
It's automatically renewable. And so, again, not knowing how fast the Historical Society would arrive at a final plan that they wanted to do, we just thought this might be the best way to go. And I let Mr. Williams speak if he would like to on anything. I enjoyed working with him. I'll answer any questions you have, but as Dave indicated, if we do anything, we would come back to the council. And when I say something of that matter, I'm talking about a structure, okay? As the lease reads, we can fence it in, we could have an outdoor display, we could have those sorts of items there, but if we actually decide to use that location to build some type of a structure, we would come back to the council and make sure that you were okay with that.
Okay.
So if that helps.
No, that's fine. I just don't want to get in the same predicament as the fire department a couple of years ago.
Yeah, where it costs $250,000, you get to build me back.
No, we'll give it to you.
Here we go.
Don't retard it.
Hold on, wait till we cross that bridge and you come to us.
All right. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve. All right, I'll entertain, entertain a motion to approve the lease agreement with the Valley Community, Community Historical Society.
So move, seconded.
Any other discussion? Okay, vote please.
Thank you.
Okay, number 15, Valley Community Historical Society, Wendy Dean, requests to have music and permission to obtain a BYOB liquor license.
Wendy Dean, 207 North First Street, Valley, Vice President of the Valley Community Historical Society. First, I want to make it perfectly clear, this is just research. You know, before I present anything to the board, I like to have all my ducks in a row. I like to know everything, um, that, you know, we're going to need to look into. So when I called the state, they said, first thing you have to do is get permission from the city. So what we are asking permission for is like what Sippin' Sounds at the brew had. We had a lot of our citizens missing that, and we thought that might be a great way that we could, um, help the community and build, um, you know, partnership for the museum, get people interested in joining the museum and supporting the museum, and events that we can do there that would be adjacent to the park when we get our new park and we start doing stuff. To get a nonprofit BYOB, we will not be selling alcohol. The nonprofit status, um, we would be allowed to do 12 events per year. So we thought if it, we did, if we got permission, the thing we would look into doing first is, you know, finding musicians. We'd like to do maybe the, some of the same ones that, um, the, uh, Sippin' Sounds did, if we can afford them. We won't be charging admission, it'll be, you know, bring your lawn chair and come. We will be selling some food, um, to try and defray the cost of the music, because we'll have to pay for the musicians, and, you know, see what else we have to do. And like I said, I'm on a fact-finding mission, and so the first thing I said I had to do is get permission. So would we be able to have permission if everything else fell in line? I've not presented it to the board yet, so they have to approve it, you know, first before we can move on. But, um, like I said, they said the first step I'd have to do is get permission.
Well, I would be in agreement if you get every step in line, yes.
I have a problem.
You do or don't?
I don't.
Okay, sorry.
You don't have a problem?
I don't have a problem with it.
Go.
Again, I mean, I know we have a resolution attached to it. I would say maybe since therefore you guys haven't approved it, I think that a resolution might be premature, but...
As long as you get, if the four of us agree that we have no problem, if you check off all the steps, then you can go to your board and come back to us.
Yeah, because I, the, um, the Liquor Commission will not approve us for the, um, you know, nonprofit status to do it for 12 times until we get permission from the city. So the first thing I have to do is get permission from the city before I can move on.
It would seem the first thing we need to do is decide this is the direction your board wants to go, knowing that we would approve this if that's the direction you want to go. But for us to blanket approve this doesn't seem wise.
Well, we've been talking a lot about doing some things. You know, there's a lot of things are up in the air, but this is a great opportunity for us to try and build new membership and help the community kind of do two things at one time. The only reason I, I'm wanting to have a decision tonight is because otherwise I have to wait another month. And we're looking at maybe doing July, August, September, which is, you know, the summertime when people want to do that type of thing, and that's kind of what the, the brew did in the summer. And if we keep putting things off every month, then all of a sudden we're in September. And then, because I don't know how long it'll take for the Liquor Commission to get back to us either, so. That's just my concern. If it's, if everything works out, we have your permission, which is the only thing to work out is, um, to get the board. Right, right now, um, we've got six of us, three of us are saying, let's go ahead and do it, the other three is we gotta look into it a little bit more, which we are, that's the whole point of the fact-finding.
And so I think, I think we're saying we're supportive of this, we just want you to carry this to your board and have them say, yes, this is the direction we want to go before we make a resolution approving.
Okay, so, so if the board says we're gonna go ahead and go, I just want to find out what my, my next step is, because I have to go to the state and they're gonna say, did the city give you permission?
Okay, if your board says yes, I would suggest you get back on our agenda, so we can do an actual vote. And be in agreement, then you can go to the state.
Okay.
So if you can get your board to agree by next month...
That's what I'm just thinking, we better get on the ball and get another board to agree. Yeah, okay, thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. All right, number 16, we have a couple more proclamations. So the first one we have is Peace Officer Memorial Day and National Police Week, May 15th, 2024, and May 12th through the 18th, 2024. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas the members of the Valley Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of all citizens in the City of Valley. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices for their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the Valley Police Department has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency which unceasingly provides a vital public service, now therefore be it resolved that I, Cindy Grove, Mayor of the City of Valley, along with my fellow council members, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12th through the 18th, 2024, Peace Officers Memorial Day and National Police Week. I encourage everyone to join me in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal protection have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. So, thank you, Chief Smith and your officers.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one, proclamation is for International Building Safety Month. Whereas the safety of the buildings we occupy daily is essential to the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the world. And whereas among the world's most fundamental laws are those providing safety standards for the construction of buildings in which people live, work, and play. And whereas for construction codes to be effective and enforced, understanding and cooperation must exist between code officials and the people they serve. And whereas through the efforts of code officials worldwide and their cooperative relationship with the construction industry, administration of these health and life safety standards is assured. And whereas units of government across the world, along with other prestigious organizations as International Code Council, Nebraska Code Officials Association, and Board of Engineers and Architects are joining to promote the use of building and construction codes today through the observation of International Building Safety Month. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Cindy Grove, Mayor of the City of Valley, along with my fellow council members, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024, International Building Safety Month. I urge all citizens to participate in International Building Safety Month activities to promote building safety and create awareness as the importance of construction and building codes in the spotlight, the role of the dedicated code official in administering these codes. Thank you. Brett, I'm sorry if it gets a whole month, it's only gonna be a week. Okay. I have ordinance number 809, which is an amendment of ordinance number 799 related to the salaries of the employees of the City of Valley. So the main difference in this is it separates the job from clerk and treasurer, um, just to have them on different line items, and then changes the title of the Assistant Superintendent to Foreman, right? Okay, any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to introduce ordinance 809 on the first reading.
So move.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Okay, no discussion. Kristi, will you read the short title of that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 809, an ordinance of the City of Valley, Nebraska, to amend ordinance number 799 relating to the salaries of the employees of the City of Valley, Nebraska, providing for an effective date of this ordinance, providing for a severability clause, and providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict here with...
Okay, thank you, vote please. All in favor? Is there a desire to suspend the rules and pass the ordinance on the second and third readings?
Seconded.
Okay, any other discussion? Vote please, all in favor, thank you. Okay, number 18, Building Inspector Schum's Code of Building Code Adoption Consulting Proposal.
I didn't plan this, I promise, but it ties in really well to the proclamation, so, um, quick note on that. Myself and three, four other people from NCOA, um, actually on the board for Nebraska Code Officials Association, we're gonna be going to Lincoln next week to Governor Pillen's office, and he's signing a proclamation, I'm assuming it's this one. So I don't see why it would be any other one, especially since the NCOA is behind that. So FYI, I'll be down there next Monday. This ties in great with it. Our building codes are in 2012 building codes, they are, that's very old. So that affects our CRS Community Rating System score for FEMA, that affects our general insurance. Essentially, the older codes that you have adopted, um, the less points you get for multiple things. So, um, the company who we work with currently to review our commercial plans, um, they also help write, um, new code amendments. It's not as simple as just amending the entire thing wholesale. You can, the problem is, it really opens up a giant, um, can of, you know what? Because there's certain things that just people don't amend in or they amend out. So what this would be is working with them, myself, working with, uh, Bill, last time I was in Denver, I actually met with him, um, and essentially writing out amendment list, um, fire sprinklers and residential, for example. Since the 2012 code, they've been required, almost no one amends them in, um, or they do some things. So this would essentially get us up to the 2024 code, which I think we'd be the first in Nebraska. So, and then every year, fall, not every year, every four years, uh, when the ICC releases a new one, we can just kind of piggyback on this strong one that we've created and spend a lot less. Um, I just want to point out this is per hour, not to exceed 3,750. I'd like to think that as involved as I get with these things, that they're not going to be putting in however many hours that is. So they're also gonna redo our energy code, just a lot of things that hopefully Valley can be the leader in, instead of just always copying what, you know, Douglas County does or Belleville or someone else. So, um, this will put us in a good position to be on the 2024 most recent, and then we'll get, again, that affects CRS points, that affects just our insurance points in general. So, any questions?
Okay, I want to entertain a motion to adopt the Schum's Code Building Code proposal.
So move.
Second.
Any other discussion? Vote please, all in favor? Okay, number 19, City Park Renovation, Motion to Advertise for Bids. Do you, were you guys gonna say anything else? No, okay.
Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you for having the open house, I think it was good, a lot of people came, so. Do you guys have any other questions?
So if we advertise for bids, are we obligated to accept bids? Or... Because the only concern I have is, if, I'm all for it, but, you know, a few of us think we need to get the water done, so...
I'd like to know if the ice peaking works. Because if that doesn't work, we need to address the water before anything major can be done. We really do.
So they're separate, different budgets.
I, I get that.
So we can do both at the same time.
Yeah, I was, sorry, Eric Casper with JEO Consulting. Part of the bid specification I've written in there that you can reject all the bids too. You can accept, want the lowest bid or reject all of them.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion, we authorize JEO to advertise for bids based on the park upgrades.
So move.
Second.
Any other discussion? Vote please. Three in favor, one against, thank you. Okay, number 20, Valley Lakes Business Park Pre-Development Cost Agreement.
So this is the, uh, pre-development cost agreement for Valley Lakes Business Park. This is something that has to do with all new developers that come in. It's essentially an agreement where they, they have developers agreeing to, um, essentially put into an escrow fund here with the city, um, money to fund the design work for certain improvements within the new development. Eagle Engineering does the design work, sewer, water, et cetera, and, um, that cost gets passed on to the developer, and that's done through this pre-development cost agreement and the associated escrow deposit. So this is, uh, the Valley Lakes Business Park, this is the pre-development agreement for that. And so we're asking that you, um, just approve that via motion here tonight.
Valley Lakes or...
Valley Lakes Business Park.
This is the eight-acre parcel that is directly south of the Main Street lift station off of 264 Streets, 264 Circle, the triangle just south of the railroad tracks or the Overpass on Digs.
Oh.
Straight west of, like, the Menards Employee Lot.
I will entertain a motion to approve the Valley Lakes Business Park Pre-Development Cost Agreement.
So move.
Second.
Any other discussion? Vote please, all in favor? Okay, number 21, Valley Landing Preliminary Platte. Any discussion about this? Do we, what were the, what are the changes in this?
I'm gonna pinch hit for Ron. They changed lot 15, Rick's in the back too, he can answer this, but...
I know.
They changed lot 15 and 16, which is the multifamily, and what was the, an outdoor or a storage lot, and they combined that into just one larger multifamily lot.
So how many apartments are we looking at?
We somewhere between...
It depends on...
What the unit mix is, because we're looking at combining some normal apartments, like you see, that are three stories, with even some single-family rentals within it, so anywhere from 200 by nine or nine to 250, perhaps, somewhere in there. You know, one, one building can have 30 units, um, within it, like what's over here at the other lake, or, you know, we, we kind of think we're gonna have around 20 or so single-family homes.
So are we looking at affordable housing or are we looking at high-end?
Um, it'll be, frankly, we're looking at three types of housing, so, Eric runs the gamut. Now, we're not looking at doing any tax credit housing, um, but it, it's market rent housing. So, you know, a lot of it's workforce, some we think will be, uh, like retirees, and some will be younger families probably. Some of the houses will be three or four bedroom. So it's, it's really, um, yeah, Valley's not a huge market, so we're gonna really provide a, basically, three different varieties of rental, so that the rents will be lesser to probably relatively expensive, frankly. I mean, and that's, but that's what can get built over time.
The cry out here is for affordable housing.
Sure.
That's what we hear over and over.
Oh, I know.
And we get told that there's gonna be affordable housing, well then it ends up being much more, which I don't consider $400,000 affordable.
I, I, I understand.
I mean, some of it's the market though, unfortunately. I mean, my house is in, yeah, Warren, do you want to talk about that? I mean, Warren saw a lot of, of work on this, I mean, that, a lot of it's the market than the environment we're in, unfortunately.
Right, so I don't know if you guys remember, but when Amy Haas came from HDR, she did a presentation on affordable. Unfortunately, the idea of affordable and the reality of affordable is different. And that's based on the market, that's based on construction costs. I see cost estimates all the time, like it or not, the cost of, um, building now is, has gone up. And unfortunately, there's no time machine to go back in time and build houses like my house in Valley in 1908, and then speed up to right now and have more options. Valley, the only option, besides people who sell their homes... Uh, Valley, the only options, besides people who sell their homes in Old Town, are new construction. And 400,000 is about, I mean, you look at, uh, just for a perfect example, um, you've got three large companies building homes in Omaha. Um, there is DL Horton, there's Woodsonia, sometimes thrown in the mix, there's a few others. They couldn't sell their homes if they were overcharging for them, because they're building hundreds at a time. And when they are not building in the floodplain, the cheapest homes you can get are like in the low 300s. So, the fact that we have a floodplain here, and those houses are built very fast, I can tell you, I'd be failing a lot of inspections if they were building out here, take that for what it is. Um, they're still selling them at 325, and they're building them 200 at a time. Um, so, un-unfortunately, as much as I don't like it, the reality is, new construction is, is, an affordable quote-unquote home is about 350, 400.
So these people that are crying to us about, get affordable housing in here, we'll have to say, suck it up, that's the market.
I, I can't, I can't force a developer to lose money on a home, if that makes sense, right? I, I don't, I, I wish I won the lottery.
I get that, it, it's like we're between a rock and a hard place.
I mean, we are.
Correct.
Because we're in a floodplain. It, it costs the developer however much more to build in Valley than it does to build in Elkhorn where there's no floodplain, that, I mean, that's the reality.
And, and that's, that's where apartments, um, that's why we're, next month, you guys will see them increase in the building coverage, the state is looking at ADUs. There are certain things we can do, but, as, as, again, as weird as it sounds, rentals, apartments, my generation, that's what's getting affordable. I mean, you, to get 20% down for a down payment, unfortunately, just, it just, a, a lot of my friends are in the construction industry, and they're making pretty good money, and they can't afford a house. So rentals is, it's affordable housing. I, I know it doesn't sound like it when you look at the price tag, when you look at the per-month rate, but getting into a new home is, is much harder. So, um, it, it's, I don't like it either, Linda, but unfortunately, it's just how it is. COVID and everything just shot up. It's like gas, it's not going to drop, right? Once they can charge 325. And that's not the contractors, that's the lumber, that's the steel, that's the copper, that's the plastic, that's the insulation, the drywall, everything that goes in your home, it's just that expensive. So, yeah.
I wish, yeah, just a slight bit of context to that. Um, the apartments, just the, not counting the land and the streets and all that, just the hardened building, which is the wood and shingles and all that, about 175,000 to 250 for what we're looking into it. So, I mean, it is less, certainly less than a single-family home. The other thing that, you know, we come in and build en masse, so we, so we do have the ability to rent for, right now, it's looking like, um, we're doing another single-family, um, rental community, and the cost to rent versus buy, there's about a 30% savings. I mean, and it's, I, I was the chairman of the commission for the State of Nebraska for housing and homelessness, and there's, there are a lot of folks that really, everybody wants everybody to have their own home, and I don't disagree with that, but there are a lot of people that won't get there. And then there are a variety of people that really don't have the skills to own their own home. I mean, they don't, it's like, okay, here's, where's your lawnmower? You know, what if something breaks? How do you do it? And they're immediately in the hole. So, rental housing is, is good for that purpose. And, you know, I, I, everything's really expensive, I can't help that.
So have you signed the, uh, contract or whatever with Fairway?
Yes. Oh yeah, I, I amended it two or three times now, so yes.
Okay.
And I have a good, I have a good relationship with them.
Okay.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the Valley Landing, um, updates, so the Valley Landing Preliminary Platte.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Vote please. All in favor? All right, then number 22 is the Valley Landing Pre-Development Cost Agreement. Um, this is, you know, very similar to the Valley Lakes Business Park Pre-Development Cost Agreement that Dan Andrea also discussed. So I would entertain a motion to approve the Valley Landing Pre-Development Cost Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Vote please. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, then number 23, Black Hills Energy Franchise Agreement Fees. Did you want to talk about that? Sure, perfect, thank you. Oh, double duty tonight.
Yes.
Jennifer Peters, on behalf of Black Hills Energy, with Jason Jervinson, our, um, operations supervisor for the area, just here tonight to renew our standard 25-year franchise agreement, first and foremost, to express our gratitude and thanks for being able to serve your community, and then, um, of course, answer any questions you might have, any concerns you have with your service. Hopefully, you do not have any concerns. Um, your ordinance specifically does include a 3% franchise fee that you collect from your, um, citizens on behalf of, um, Black Hills, and so just making sure that you don't have any questions about that.
Guys, how many questions?
Dave, as you reviewed this, did you have any comment? And if not, that's okay.
I don't, I, excuse me, I reviewed it as did the city attorney's office, and we're both fine with it.
It did not have any major substantive changes from the past 25-year agreement, and it is our, um, standard agreement across all of our franchises.
Okay. All right, I would entertain a motion to introduce ordinance 810 on the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, Christy, will you read the title of it, please?
Ordinance number 810, an ordinance granting Black Hills, Nebraska Gas, LLC, DVA, Black Hills Energy, the Delaware Corporation, its PBCs, successors, and signs, a natural gas franchise, and the authority to construct, operate, maintain, and extend a natural gas distribution plant and system, and granting the right to use the streets, alleys, and other public places within the present or future corporate limits of the city of Valley in Nebraska.
Thank you. A vote please. All in favor? Is there a desire to suspend the rules and pass the ordinance on the second and third readings?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? Vote please. All in favor? Okay, then we have ordinance number 811, and that one is just the outlining the fee that they mentioned. I'd entertain a motion to introduce ordinance 811 on the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hey, Christy, will you read the title of this one?
Ordinance number 811, an ordinance establishing a franchise fee on natural gas companies operating in the city of Valley, Nebraska.
Okay, vote please. All in favor? Is there a desire to suspend the rules and pass the ordinance on the second and third readings?
So moved.
Second.
Vote please. All in favor?
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you. And as soon as it's signed and official, I'd love a copy for our record. Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, number 24 is a revised agreement with Blan and Associates, and this is updated to add the single audit, right? Okay, so we have to do a single audit due to the amount of federal funds we received from the, um, SRF loan with the water treatment plant and water treatment upgrades. So I will entertain a motion to approve the revised agreement with Blan and Associates.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Vote please. All in favor? All right, number 25 is light insurance, Blue Cross Blue Shield Premium Increase, Doug.
Doug Egan, Public Works Superintendent, and other things.
Also insurance, apparently.
So we were notified by light, this is, if you remember, this is our first renewal on the pooled, um, insurance product that we, was effective in July of 2023. 9% increase is, I went back to them, and they told me that 8% of that increase is strictly projected medical trend or the expected costs in the next year, and the rest of the increase was based on the experience or the healthiness of our group. So we're only getting a 1% increase over medical trend. So, um, can't really complain. We are going to move our dental from Mutual of Omaha to Blue Cross, so our medical and dental will both be with Blue Cross, and there was a savings to that. Now, not enough to offset the 9%, but it, it will, there will be a discount for that.
So this goes into effect now?
Uh, July 1.
So their contract goes July, from July to July?
Yeah, and I think we, we put, we hit, we knew we were going to get some sort of increase, so we didn't budget. It's not like we're going over budget because of the 9% increase.
And we don't have much choice?
No.
No? I'll entertain a motion to approve moving forward with Blue Cross with the increase.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Vote please. Thanks, Doug.
You're welcome.
All right, number 26, Conditional Use Permit, Roxanne Tucker, quarry first standing for gravel extraction.
Okay, so planning, we had quite a bit of discussion regarding this. There were some, um, constituent questions that were, that came up, um, after the discussions that were had. It seems like everything, everyone's issues were, um, a, a lot of them were just based on they weren't sure what was happening. Um, so essentially, this is just a conditional use permit for, um, the land that is, oh gosh, 264th? It's right behind the Mallard Storage, there's a lot out there that's empty currently. 270th. So, they just want to kind of move their mining operation that's already on 270th?
It's like, if the existing is 264th?
264th, the, the new one would be on 270th, right. Um, there was a discussion about Douglas County requiring to pave that road, um, they decided they're just going to go through their property and just hit, um, where they currently come in, uh, they're going to stay 100 feet off, which is all in the conditional use, um, they're going to just do a 100-foot buffer off the property line, which they don't have to, um, as long as they get a state grading permit, they could go right up to the fence, but they decided, we're just going to do 100 feet eventually down the road. Um, I don't know if anyone's here to talk about it? No? Okay, I'm not the one who's doing it, so, um, but, uh, I can tell you what they told me. So if you guys have questions, let me know. Um, but their idea with that 100-foot buffer is to, um, eventually sell it, and then you could have lots on it, or whatever. Obviously, if you make the whole property a lake, you can't really sell it down the road. So, 100-foot around, um, so just let me run through a couple of these conditions. We need to amend one. I was under the impression that they needed a state grading permit, so it's actually A, which just needs to be changed from a State of Nebraska grading permit to a State of Nebraska industrial stormwater permit. It's a very similar permit, but it just makes sure that they're doing everything that they're supposed to.
Well, why aren't, why aren't they here?
Um, I, I couldn't tell yet.
They were at the Planning Commission hearing, and they answered a lot of questions.
Yeah, so, um, they'll have to obtain an Nebraska floodplain development permit, um, they have to obtain a 404, that's wetlands, if applicable, engineer will come out and see if there's any wetlands, if there are, they have to mitigate them. Um, applicant shall grant an ingress egress easement for truck, access of truck traffic to 264th. They own both properties, but because they're not one property, that's where that easement would come in. 100-foot buffer shall exist between the property lines and the lake not owned by the contractor. Obviously, there's one portion where they own, so that buffer is not required. Um, work so conducted between hours of 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, they're not going to be there that long, but I just wanted to put it in there. Um, and then, if any new driveways are roused proposed, applicant shall be required to obtain the, um, required Douglas County permit for truck access, because that's on the gravel road. So, they said that they didn't want to do that, they were just going to go through their other property to 264th.
You're talking about the Grasky land? Is that where you're talking?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sure, yes.
Is this, is this at the Planning Commission that he was, he said he's just a small?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Small gravel pit.
Yeah.
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, their, their current one.
I know what you're talking about now.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, and at the Planning Commission, there was a lot of questions and comments in the, um, they were able to satisfy the comments and concerns that the constituents had.
So, yeah, the big thing is just changing A from State of Nebraska grading permit to State of Nebraska industrial stormwater permit. Again, it's very similar, um, but, you know...
So, but if he doesn't follow through all your steps there that you listed, he doesn't get it, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yep. And then, the conditional use comes into question if he doesn't continue to follow any of these, the work times, the, anything. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2024-33 to authorize the conditional use permit for the quarry first standing for gravel.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Vote please. All in favor? All right, number 27 is a conditional use permit for KMG Partners LLC to erect temporary asphalt plant with material piles.
So this one happened at the same time. Again, there was a little bit of discussion. Um, this one was much less, because it's all the way out on 300th Street. Uh, the one concern, not concern, the one item that I had was for them to obtain a Douglas County driveway permit, just because they were going to be adding a driveway off of Douglas County's. They've already done all that, I already have the permit. Um, what I noticed in the permit is that Douglas County's, uh, it's like a temporary driveway access, they call it, expires March 31st of 2025. So I figured, we just make ours also expire March 31st, 2025, and if they go back to Douglas County to get an extension, they can come back here and get an extension. So, that was a little simpler, this one, so. Questions?
Okay, so... Okay. Um, and so I do apologize, I missed to open the public hearing on these, so we'll do this one first, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone else in the public that wants to speak about the KMG Partners? Okay, we'll close that public hearing. Um, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2024-34 to authorize the conditional use permit for KMG's partner, KMG's partner.
Second.
Any other discussion? Vote please, all in favor? Okay, so then I will also go back and clarify on number 26 for the conditional use permit. Um, we did need to have a public hearing with that. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on that? Okay, we'll close that public hearing. That doesn't print on my printed copy. Anyway, number 28, People Service.
Hello.
Hello. Step right up, sir.
Michael Dare, People Service Inc. Uh, update on the ice picking. Um, sometime early June, we're going to be starting ice picking. Upon approval of the bid, which is later on in the agenda, um, as stated before, it's going to be a scheduled thing. We're going to let the public know about a week in advance that we're going to be on this side of town, then moving here, then moving here, trying to nail it down to certain days, but once again, this is a project that a lot's involved with, so I'm going to keep it kind of open, it's not going to be Monday at 8:00 AM, we're going to be here. I'm going to keep it, you know, uh, kind of like that, but, uh, we're going to share the schedule, and, um, I guess just do it and see what happens. And we're on our roll.
Has there been any complaints regarding discolored water this month or last month? Do you know?
Not that I'm aware of, to the, um, city anyway, no. No, there was one. Yeah, Jeremy went and handled that, there was, there was one, and he opened up a hydrant and flushed it, and it took care of that, so...
So it seems like the changes to the flushing helped this year?
Yes, it did, just in the flushing alone, we noticed a big difference, you know? Um, so yeah, yeah. And hopefully the ice picking will, um, lower the amount of groundwater complaints when we have pressure fluctuations.
Is that going to cause any water discoloration as it's forcing credit?
The way it works is, we will shut down an, an entire main, and open up a fire hydrant on this side, open up a fire hydrant on this side, push the ice through it, and then open up this valve over here and flush all that water out that fire hydrant. So, um, obviously, there probably will be some, I mean, just because we are disturbing things, or, you know, and this is salted ice water. Um, so there might be, since this, you know, um, service lines are right there, people might have a little bit of salted water for, for a few minutes, just to get flushed out of there. There'll be some, yes, just because we're disturbing everything, right? right? You know, but obviously, we're going to flush everything the best that we can, and.
Yeah, I fairly agree. I'd just obviously add that into your notice that I expected.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I'm sure one will be similar to how we did the press release for the displaced water and how to fix it if it does happen.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Obviously, I'll coordinate with, you know, these fabulous people, and we'll get something made up and get it out to everybody once we get the schedule finalized and everything. But once approved, then we'll get it scheduled and get it done. Any more questions, comments?
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Olmstead and Perry, Water Improvement Projects.
Good evening, everyone. Jim Olmstead of Olmstead and Perry. First item we'd like to do tonight is close out the chemical feed improvement project. This is the third project that'll be closed out of the five. The project has been completed. The state has done a preliminary inspection of all the work, and everything is fine from their standpoint. So to close out the project, we have a couple items that we need to take action on. The first is the approval of change order number four, which establishes the final contract price for the project. It adds a second chlorine day tank and scale to provide extra flexibility that Mike and Jeremy wanted in the system, so that things will be able to work on a more flexible basis. We are feeding chlorine in three points, so this way that gives us the flexibility of doing all that without creating any undue pressure on one scale and one tank. So that change order is in the amount of $6,592.69, and we would need a motion to approve that change order.
Somebody want to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Vote please. All in favor?
Okay, the second item is we have resolution number 2024-27, and this is to approve the final application for payment number, it's number four, to Newverth Construction in the amount of $25,712.94. We've reviewed that application. That is an accurate number, and that does represent the final work completed on the project. So that would require action by the council.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution 2024-27 to, for application for payment number four from Newverth Construction in the amount of $25,712.94.
So moved.
Any other discussion? Vote please. All in favor?
The final item on this project is for the council to approve the closeout of the project. That includes acceptance of the certificate of substantial completion, which was dated May 3rd, and also it includes the affidavit of payment of debts and claims, and also includes the contractor's consent of bonding company to file payment. And all those documents are in place to close out the project. So just take a motion to accept and close out the project.
Second.
Any other discussion? Vote please. All in favor?
The next project is the Back Horse Waste Recovery Project. This project is nearing completion. Wasn't quite ready for today, so it'll be on the agenda for closeout at the next meeting in June. But what we have to do today is we need to approve change order number two. This is a formalization of the work directive changes that have been approved for the project. We have to convert that into a change order, and that change order amount is $50,294.91. And that includes all the conversion of the work directive changes and other miscellaneous items to get that project in its final state. So we need a motion for that.
So we want to make a motion to approve change order number two in the amount of $50,294.91.
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? Vote please. All in favor?
Okay, we have resolution number 2024-28. This is council consideration and action to approve application for payment number seven to Newverth Construction in the amount of $118,982.99. Again, that represents work that has been completed to date. That takes the project to about 99.5% complete.
Okay, so we want to make a motion to approve resolution number 2024-28.
So moved. Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Vote please. All in favor?
And we do have one final change order number three for the Back Horse Project. This was just something that came in the last few days. In talking with Jeremy, we want to put a VFD on one of the waste pumps, so that gives us added flexibility to be able to push that waste either into the Back Horse Waste Tank or into the sewer system in the event that the tank is down for maintenance and so forth. So that, actually, that VFD is already in place, but we have to order another one. We have a spare one on hand, so this is going to replace the spare one that we had. So that change order is in the amount of $11,278.44.
Okay, so we want to make a motion to approve change order number three in the amount of $11,278.44.
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? Vote please. All in favor?
The Water Tower Repainting Project. We were very close to being able to close that out tonight, too, but we didn't make it. The tank has been painted. The logos are on. Hope you can all see them and like the colors. I think the colors look pretty sharp. Sometimes when it's really bright in the day, you can't quite see that green, but on a cloudy day, it really pops. It looks good. So, anyway, contractor has a little bit of cleanup to do. We've got a couple of paint overspray claims that we need to solve. I think there, I know at least four of them. I think there's another one. Kristi, I think I sent you an email. If we could just confirm, we have one or two more that we need to get taken care of. And then, that will close out that project. We did have a change order number three in the amount of $7,650. This is for the additional work of repairing the steel plates on the base of the tank interior that had rusted out so badly. And that involved a lot of welding, pit repair, paint, and everything in accordance with applicable standards to make that happen. So the tank is now quite brand-new.
Okay, I'll make a, I need a motion to approve change order number three in the amount of $7,650 for the repair work on the deteriorated steel plates.
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? Vote please. All in favor?
Jim, why is the city responsible for the overspray?
City is not. Contractors, contractors, insurance companies. He's turned that over to the insurance company.
I will be glad when we're done with him, to be honest. They've taken, I know weather and stuff, but it's been a long drawn out.
It's been a haul. We do, we do have an application for payment number six to Onyx in the amount of $85,592.33. That takes us everything up to about the last $2,000 of the project. So we've reviewed that, and we recommend that payment be approved as well.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number 2024-29 to approve application for payment number six from Onyx in the amount of $85,592.33.
So moved.
Any other discussion? Vote please. All in favor?
There will be a check that'll come back from Onyx to the city for the rental of the generator that was used during the project. I think that was in the range of $68, $6900, something like that. So that, that check will have to come in before we close it out, too.
And do you have, like, the final walkthrough scheduled with Doug or Mike or whomever?
We do not have it yet. We were going to do it Monday, and then they weren't finished, and we decided that since we couldn't close it out, we would just wait until they get everything done and cleaned up.
I worry a little bit that they took all their supplies, and they might have some things to fix and finish.
They'll bring them back if they do. Their trailers are still there, too.
I know, but they took down all the.
Oh, yeah. Are they going to be the company that looks in the new?
The bladder.
The bladder, catch.
Who puts the bladder up?
Yeah, the bladder was, I can't remember, was the bladder damaged before? Yeah, it was gone. It was gone.
It wasn't gone, it just was damaged.
It had received all the water, so it is, I'll have to look and see.
Yeah, I mean, they, I think they took it down, right? When did the bladder go? Did Onyx take it down when they started?
Yeah.
Where, do we, do we need?
I don't have any idea.
Okay. So Onyx took it down when they, so yeah.
So we need to know about it.
We need to know about it.
I've been in there.
Do they? Doug says no.
There's no bladder.
There's no bladder.
It's a condensation bladder.
Yeah.
It goes in there.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I don't know if we need a new one, or.
I thought that was part of the whole thing, was to get in here. I thought that was in the bed.
I don't remember mine. I'll have to go back and look.
I think, I think you're right, because of the damage to it from the last.
Yeah, there was some damage to it from the, from the last time, but it leaked, and I thought that it was in this proposal to replace that as well as.
I do recall that as well.
Yeah, I'll double-check that.
Okay.
So like I mentioned, for future updates, we will have closeout for the Water Tower Project and for the Back Horse Waste Project at the next meeting. The state has been here for inspections for three of the projects. They'll probably come back and do the Back Horse Waste Inspection. They probably will not come back for the Water Tower Inspection, but that's what's coming up. And then, we have prepared the outline reports for signature so that we can request money from the state to pay for the project, and we'll get that to Lori and Kristi.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jim?
I will leave all these documents with Kristi for you tonight.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right, number 30, City Engineer.
30, maybe I have that many items. Item A, then, tonight we have Stillwater Phase One. This is the utility contract, which included the water main, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer improvements with Verba Construction. We do have the final change order in the amount of a decrease of $12,296.40. That's just the adjustment of final quantities, and basically, we removed a couple of water service taps for the homes that will be just conducted and installed as part of the building instruction, which we had changed since we have bid this project with room on that. So having reviewed that, we do recommend approval of change order in that said decrease amount.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the change order number one for a decrease in the amount of $12,296.40.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Vote please. All in favor?
And then, correspondingly, resolution 2024-30 is the council consideration approval of contractor's application number five, which is the final in the amount of $202,349.22. That basically consists of the final sanitary sewer work and the retainer job on the construction contract due to Verba Construction.
Add it still water?
Yes, sorry, that does not, no, it's on the same heading, sorry, Linda. Yeah, having reviewed that, we do recommend approval of pay application number five to Verba Construction.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Vote please. Three in favor, one against?
Item B, then, Stillwater Phase One, paving improvements, this is within LLL Concrete. They had completed the work on 276 circle and also the curb and gutter work among that and some storm sewer inlets. And this is just a progress payment number two in the amount of $72,768.37. And having reviewed that, we do recommend that progress payment to them in that set amount.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve resolution number 2024-31 to approve payment number two in the amount of $72,768.37.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Vote please. Three in favor, one against?
And then, correspondingly, we actually, Stillwater Phase Two Paving Improvements, same contractor, LLL Concrete has completed this, Concrete work, this one is actually basically going to be complete. We're just pending the closeout documents and final inspection and all that good stuff that we'll have on the next meeting, but this, again, is payment application number two, which is a progress payment in the amount of $268,146.2 pennies.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution 2024-32 to approve payment number two in the amount of $268,146.2 cents.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, vote please. Three in favor, one against?
Item D, then, this is a proposal from Titus Waste Water Solutions. I believe they're out of Idaho. I can't actually remember that. This is a odor control equipment product that Mike actually came across probably about a year ago. I think it was a trade show, right? Yep. And so we had worked with them and evaluated. That's basically a piece of equipment. Again, that's the set amount. This would be a replacement of the current dioxide chemical that we inject at the Mig Street lift station for odor control. The city spends almost annually about $75, $75,000 annually on this chemical. So this piece of equipment produces ozone to react with the hydrogen sulfates and then combats it that way. There is no other cost on this. It makes it from the air, and then there is no ongoing cost for the city, so it'd be a, basically it will pay for itself in less than one year of operation. So this is an estimate of $46,200. The final estimate, or the final invoice that the city gets will be that set amount plus the freight charge to get it here.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposal from Titus Waste Water Solutions for odor equipment in the amount of $46,200.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Vote please. All in favor?
Item E, then, this is the American Pipe Solutions that Mr. Dyer talked about with the ice picking. This is a proposal in the amount of $52,770. This will clean about 9,000 feet roughly of mains, and like Mike said, it's scheduled for the first week of June. So once we have this approved, we'll give Mike the final direction, and then we'll confirm the plan.
Do we know exact date yet?
No, well, no.
I think they're scheduled to arrive the first week of June.
Well, we can't get a final date until they approve, but, because they're going to be in the area already, so it'll be one day of.
Where are they from?
Florida.
Florida. But they're coming up to South Dakota, and I think to Iowa or somewhere in there, so we're going to be in between those two projects. Because we're not big enough for them to schedule. We can't afford their mobilization fees if they just came up for us. So they're putting us in between, which obviously gives us savings.
I think once this is approved.
The first week of June.
Once this is approved, if it's approved tonight, then we can go back to them tomorrow, and probably by the end of the week, we could have more of a firm date that we can share with everybody.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve proposal from American Pipe Solutions for ice picking water mains in the amount of $52,770.
So moved, and I can't wait, and I hope it works.
Thank you for the pressure.
We haven't had any groundwater complaints. One, this winter spring, too, so, I mean, we've already made some progress. So there is a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Vote please. All in favor?
Thank you. Just some miscellaneous updates. The Ginger Cove number three, Bellhaven number two, and Ginger Woods number two, these are the lift stations that we have struggled with getting the parts to get to. My understanding is they have all the equipment now, and they're just needing to test it and get it shipped here. And then, Verba Construction is the contractor for both of those contracts to get these both completed. Did ask them for a bid last week, and I haven't gotten that yet, so I don't have any news to share on that yet, but we will get it done, now that I know the equipment is here. FY24 Concrete Street, basically, all these next items are, we're going to have a lot of construction activity happening in the next month, so FY24 Concrete Street repairs, we're going to have the precon on that coming up. They've told me that they're trying to schedule that for middle of June. Correspondingly, Maple Road, 270th Street overlay, Ginger Woods Road overlay. We had the precon for that a couple weeks ago. They're actually going to start on that, one of those contracts tomorrow on Maple and 270th, when I, with Doug's help, those notices have been posted to the website, and we'll continue to post updates of short road closure type things or diversions and stuff like that. And Mayor, that does include the conversion of the, I call it the shoe fly there, 270th and Maple. That is two-way. That will go to one way, similarly to the 264th and Maple Shoe Fly on the southbound. So we'll get another notice made and put out for that. The Mig Street Dalvar retrofit diamond grinding, that's again from the Roman Tracks Tours, Loves and Dairy Queen, that precon we're going to have on Thursday. They've told me that they were trying to start that here at the end of May. I think they told me it was going to be a three-week project for that, so we'll. I think they told me it was going to be a three-week project for that, so we'll have, again, more notices to distribute and get to the residents and the, of the city. Valley Bakes, Business Park, and Valley Landing, both of those predevelopments and preliminary plans, final plots, all that, and other requests associated with those are ongoing, so we'll just continue to work on that with the city attorneys.
Thank you, any questions over there?
Thank you.
City attorney.
Um, just to follow up on Greg's point, so Valley Landing is, we're going to be seeing a lot of over the next couple months, so that's kind of been a couple different approval processes, so you will be seeing, as you know, today in the CDA meeting, we sent that predevelopment plan to planning for their review. Planning then turns around, and if they do recommend approval, or at least recommend and conclude that it's, you know, compliance with our comprehensive development plan, they send it back to council and to the CDA. So you guys will see it again in July. In connection with that, there will be a redevelopment contract, this is all in connection with their tip request, that will all come before the CDA and council in July, so just that's coming. Also, the supposition agreement for Valley Landing will be on the July council agenda as well. So just so you know, the timeline on that, you will be seeing more of that as we move forward, and then obviously, the ongoing other projects, we've been working on, Valley Bakes Business Park, and then a lot of Jeff's time over the last month was spent on various personnel matters, police department, so that's been a big focus as well, and that's kind of generally been where our focus has been, so.
Okay, any questions, Andrew? Nope? Okay. Mayor's report, I don't have too much tonight, we are continuing work, when I say we, I mean, we're continuing work on the audit and accounting entry cleanup, and then K9 Sonic has been moved to Officer Hempel, and they're going to start training in June, they're already doing a couple things, but beneficially in June, right?
June, tent, I believe.
June 10th, they'll start training, so. Upcoming items, Validize Planning Meeting next Tuesday and Planning Commission next Tuesday, so. Meeting adjourned.
Thanks, guys.